...the budget work session, Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, April the 11th, 2016. A silent rule of counsel has been taken, as we noted there is a form of counsel present. The mayor and the town clerk has received an official written letter of resignation from Councilman Lipsky, Councilman McGuire of the state, and the vice mayor, the governor of the state. I have heard from him today. Purpose of meeting, that which is involved in the budget, as the town begins to prepare the budget for next season, so we're gonna start with you, Mr. Weddington. And the mayor and the council, we want to hear the good and the not-so-good. We want to hear all of what this is about. Okay, town manager, I'll start with you.
Mayor, council. We thought, thank you. Mayor, council, we figured this would be probably great, as we've been listening before. Tonight is just kind of a broad overview of where we are, with more focus on revenues. In a minute, I'll just kind of start going through his presentation, and our indicators, he has a very preliminary draft budget. Been working with the budget committee, super currency, and Tom McGuire, but I have my little sheet, we can talk about it after. But we're trying to give hopes of overview, because of where we are right now, it's not a common budget. So I'd like to get some direction and put new hopes, so we could go down those directions. But I don't want to turn a little bit to Robert, and that includes his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Good evening, mayor and council. First, I'd like to just show you, kind of, this overview of the general local economy that this display is prepared by the University of Arizona staff, and basically shows going from left to right, you have 14 and 15, which is mostly actual data, and then 16, 17, 18 to 19, which are projections for the year. You can see, you know, 15, change required in residential building permits, just want to draw your focus to the bottom there of that chart, 15 percent, 16, 11.4 percent. That'll come into supporting an issue later on in the presentation. But you can see, basically, positive trends in all the data going into, for the next five years, essentially, or four years, 16, 17, 18 to 19. On the next slide, we have the Western Region CPI, and basically, this is an inflation factor that indicates increased costs for commodities, and as far as energy professional services, will probably be increasing over time. You can see on the far right, the chart going up quite quickly to a rate of 2 percent per month, or 2 percent overall calculated rate for the year. That's kind of where we're at, and expect to be in the next year. So, trends for the current year, what we experienced so far, revenues, non-construction-related sales tax has been increasing as projected. However, construction-related taxes are decreasing faster than expected, and this is due to changes in state legislation that took effect January 1st, 2015, that couldn't be fully passed again as to whether impact would be going forward. One of the changes was retroactive, actually initiated, I think, in March or April. So, but it has had an impact on us by basically taking construction sales tax and maybe sales tax on materials only for most of what's covered under construction sales tax, or what's covered under construction sales tax. So, since the supplies are purchased out of town, we lose construction tax, and we don't gain retail sales tax. So, state share revenues are currently meeting expectations, although there was some question on the dollar amount in total for the year and next year because of the mid-decade census that was, that's being accepted, that will change our proportionate share of those revenues. Other construction revenues, like building permit fees, engineering fees, all the impact fees, capacity charges, are significantly less than expected, and I just want to go back to that previous slide. You know, this isn't the only indicator we have that supported double-digit increase in construction. It was also based on what we were told by developers and builders in the area, what they expect to pull in permits. So, and of course, you know, the numbers that we're experiencing now had to be estimated over a year ago. So, that tells you why, essentially, that there's an issue with those revenues now, because based on this information, plus information received from other interested third parties that directly impact us, just what people notice didn't happen as we expected. So that's affecting our current revenues. So, on the expense side, of course, as I indicated earlier, we expect, and we have experienced some inflation for some costs, so we expect road maintenance cost to fully deplete our HERF revenue this year, and we've already spent the HERF money this year. Utility maintenance improvements continue to increase in cost, or continue to increase for FY16, but also FY17, we'll talk about that in our assumptions here. So, revenue assumptions for the next fiscal year, again, town, non-construction-related sales tax will increase, however, those increases are pretty much, and unfortunately, a little bit negative, are offset by a construction-related sales tax that continues to decrease. State share revenues are expected to decrease slightly due to mid-decade census adjustment. We expect that to have an impact of about $21,000 in state share revenue. Estimates for other construction revenues, like building permit fees, engineering fees, engineering fees, all the impact fees, and fast charges, are now more conservative. We're basing it more on our own past experience, in that the suit savers, or the buyers, or are interested in third parties, we're just relying more. So, we've adjusted those downwards going for fiscal year 16 to 17. So, again, our expense assumptions, based on CPI, we expect inflation to continue to increase the cost of operation and maintenance, and we plan on some increase per zone cost due to COLA 2 percent, I guess that should end another line, but increased health insurance rates, and then increase due, a very, very small increase this year, due through retirement rates changing, so employer contribution to the retirement system. And then we have a potential merit pay increase. And it's typically not a very large dollar amount, and the percent of wage change is 0.5 percent to 2 percent.
How much is it going to be? How much exactly is merit pay increase?
Well, it's not, it might increase by well by $40,000 at the most.
Last year was $30,000. $30,000 from last year.
Okay, so 40,000.
Again, that's just like an upper bound. It's going to be based on what people actually deserve, which could be much less than that.
Okay.
Yeah, I do the same one, though.
I'm not attributing a positive or a negative. No, I'm not attributing. Sorry, I'm not making any assessments, I'm just telling you what the relative possibility is.
I took it as a factual statement, Mr. Weddington.
I have fellow employees in the audience, so just maybe some, maybe on the way out. Anyways, but the numbers, the general fund, this is an overview of what we have now, just based on the budget for 17, and then we have a comparison of projected actual for 16 and the actual for 15. And you can see that the general fund did quite well compared to expenses, but in 17, it gets a little closer to just breaking even, but it's still in the good.
Could we go back to that second point? That which is driving the expense increase, is that which you've just presented, some of these decreases from the bond construction sales tax? Is there any one thing in the community that's driving the expense increase? I understood the first reason.
Sure.
State share revenues may go down over everything else, but is there a single sales tax down?
There's a combination between the two, there's a combination of two things. Generally, revenues across the board, if we look at it, state, share revenues from the census, I don't get change, and what we're doing at construction. It's also our debt service. It's a significant amount in utilities, and that's been my debt number here. You're just coming to a point now where revenues are not going to be able to carry expenses like it has in the past. So, I don't think it's one thing in particular, even though this year, we took a significant hit in the legislature to change construction units, in the immediate census.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Yeah. Construction did well for Crete, Phoenix, and those, because those places, where people buy bulk materials, whether it's mellowed ground, it's not here, it's not Crete. So, those communities did well. For us, they're not so well. And we tend to rely on construction for the other areas.
Okay, the water company is positive, water, not the waste water, the water company.
Yeah. This is how I kind of look at it. I have the little sheet, and I look at the town in different sections. If you look at the general fund, we're actually positive, 373,000. If you look at just revenues and expenses, not talking about transfers. If you look at Cave Creek Water, we're negative 292,000 based on revenues versus expenses. If you look at Desert Hills Water, we're actually positive by 44,000. But the real issue we have is wastewater plan. Looking at the revenues of 1.7 million, and the expenses exceed 3.1 million. So, that's a negative deficit of 1.4 million. Problem is, when you structured the debt payments in those days, under Wilford's rules, you had two things. You have a short-term, 20-years, a sewer plant's built for 35 to 40 years. It's like a house, you usually take it out for 30 years. But for Wilford, concerned about the economy, they started to down it 20 years, so it increased our annual payments. And then you have the reserve, and reserve is a whole four-year debt service, and for us, it's about 4.9 million, but for you, it's 4.8, almost 4.9 million, that's set off the side. Our hope is, and what we want to do, and we'll talk about it later, is to restructure those loans, or re-issue those loans, and get a longer term. Those are two things, you're lowering your annual payments, and at the same time, we're free up some of that reserve capital reserve, you can use that towards roads or facilities or whatever. I don't want to use it for operating myself, I'll use it toward capital, because that's kind of where our focus is. But, so I kind of look at it, if you look at the general fund, Cave Creek, Desert Hills, wastewater, and then there's a couple of other small things, that might just pick town hall debt, open space, those type of things, all of that has to get paid out of the general fund. It's not HERF money, it's not any state share of grant money, it's all part of the general fund, and that's how we make up the difference here. Plus, doing those reserves, so, that's more like Marcus and the big one.
Okay, the water, we're going to go negative 40,000, that's in your forecast.
For Cave Creek Water.
For Cave Creek Water.
For Cave Creek Water.
Yeah, not Desert Hills Water.
Not Desert Hills.
And wastewater has been, of course, negative for some time, so that's the bigger call for the government.
That's it. It was just water by itself, it's something we could more or less handle and manage, it just, and we haven't raised fees, and one of the points I'm trying to make is, we haven't raised fees since 2009, it's been a long time, we need to do that. We just changed our bulk rate.
Let's take the solutions, get it right right now, just run it down.
Yes, sir.
That just needs to be sure of.
Your question, Mr. Weddington.
Yes, mayor.
What's happening?
Oh, okay.
Council, okay, so far?
Yes. I do apologize, there was a mission in the slides, that wastewater wasn't displayed, but it does have a huge impact in terms of its demand on the general fund for sustenance to maintain its operations, and that's on the sheet that Peter had given you with the negative rate number of 1,441,000, $150. So, he just went through most of the slides, spoke a little bit about this, two other kind of funds that have a major impact on their operation or expected operation, FY17. The town out debt service, it doesn't have adequate sources of funding for it, because it's mostly development impact fees that go in there, we don't collect a lot of those. And those rates had to be revised in the last development impact fee study, and then just, that's really all that goes in there, so the general fund has to subsidize the debt service payments. Open space acquisition, the reason why it's showing a negative is because in the budget document that you have, we're expecting to spend up to $500,000 of the appropriation in budget, but the revenues for that fiscal year are not $500,000. But there is some money that's been accumulated in the fund, so this would be liquidating the fund balance from that fund.
Okay, but projected, just run it on what?
Whatever our legal costs in land acquisition costs that we need for open space.
The discussion I had with the vice mayor, you wanted approximately $500,000 in the budget for that, should we put a budget of $500,000? Of that, $500,000, some other monies are coming in and out, but the half cent, which is really a quarter cent, roughly, I think it's estimated at $400,000. That money's not shown here, because it's not general fund money, it's dedicated money that goes into the strong part.
So, we get to the next slide, which is the challenges for FY17, and this one, we have no control, but the state legislation, state legislature may pass legislation, it continues to impact towns, cities, construction sales tax. You know about the impact of that, of course, the alternative to simplifying it would be to make it go to zero. So, there's that potential. Sales tax on home rentals, that was in the proposed legislation the last two years, including this most current session. I believe we'll bring it back again next year. And then state share revenues, again, who knows what they'll do with that? But our HERF could actually increase if they ever, basically, they've adjusted the way they share the HERF money since the fiscal crisis at the state level, so maybe that will result, so maybe we'll get increased funding, but it would be simply for HERF, so there's a positive to that possibility. Overall revenues, this year, at this point, for FY17, the mis-drafted version of the budget, are less than expected expenses, so that's a challenge to overcome. We need to find funding, essentially, for repair and replacement, and mostly associated with the utility operations, but also for roads, and other capital improvements, so things that we need to add on, or create in addition to what we currently have. So, then the other challenge would be maintaining required reserves, so we can't spend all of the money because we have a requirement to maintain a certain balance, based on one year's debt service, as well as repair and replacement for the utility operations. So, those are our challenges. Kind of how we will be meeting some of those challenges, potentially, in 17 and beyond, are, we're looking to, as part of a program identified in this budget and under finance, is hire financial advisors, and that's estimated at cost at $40,000 for next year. They're going to be identifying funding needs and sources, potentially, and examining the debt, potentially, to restructure it, and as Peter indicated before, this would essentially lower our principal, and our, maybe, change our debt service payments, so, and also change our debt reserve requirements, depending on the funding source and amount. It could be a large chunk of money, so.
Could we go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
I'm not be able to help out a little bit unless, the required reserves are something the town is responsible for, so whatever the dollar number is, that's what we have to do. Having spent great amount of time the past couple of months down at the Senate and the House, the legislature is, anything that has the word tax to it, they're jumping away from it, so we may be okay that way. However, state share revenues, I suspect state's tightening up, and they're not giving out, they're, instead of spreading the surplus, they're constricting even more, so that may affect us.
It's a census, two censuses, it's a simple, it's shifting.
Yes.
May I ask you, when can we ask questions? I'm just asking, I'm not sure.
I'm almost finished.
Let me hear the presentation, so it's council. Mr. Weddington, back to the challenges.
So, that's one outlaying FY17 that I believe to be needed for, essentially, coming up with a plan for our financial future. And then a water sewer rate study, and this is one I'm going to review, the ones that was done in 2009 for rate increase. This will ensure that rates are above all accurate, and it'll help us also identify costs that need to be allocated differently or more appropriately, which would be the way of doing it. And then it'll build a model for future rate reviews, so essentially, hopefully, this is kind of a one-time cause, where we'll end up with a model with sufficient documentation surrounding it, where we know how to use it ourselves going forward, so we can ensure that rates are appropriate. And this will also give us justification for any potential rate increase by doing this, so I believe it's a necessary expense because of that. So, those are two things that we kind of, and those will be charged to the utility operations.
Okay, so.
Okay, I was going to ask a quick question. Regarding the study, will that also take in a long-range look at those who are on wells, who wells may go dry, and what the cost would be to bring water to their properties?
Potentially could, that would have to be identified in the process of rate formulation, but it's not something on the panel I had that I would, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
What do we get for 40,000, and who are, and how long should it take to get?
We're currently in the middle of reviewing responses to requests for proposals for professional services, financial advisory services, and those rates have run out between 300 and $550 an hour. So, it potentially could get us 133 hours, or, you know, maybe less, but it's, I hope to be sufficient time to get the job done in the next fiscal year. The other possibility is that we can tie some of the cost into the FY18 budget as well, so we could work out a plan with them to make sure that they get.
Council, we're looking at somewhere between 20 and 30,000. And our goal is, our instructions with the financial advisors would be, we want to be in a position by the end of fiscal years next year, where we can go and look at, before then, have office of council, what we can do with our debt that's going to mature home rent at that time, which is someone excess of 23 million. So, we want to be able to say, this is what we want to do, this is our recommendation. So, our discussion with them is, for the 30,000 or 20,000 that we pay, we want to be able to come this time next year, and have an option of what we're going to do, and start that process for restructuring our debt, or re-shriving debt, or however we want to do it. And those are the fees that Robert's talking about now, wrapping them in. It's like going to your house, sometimes you have closing fees, you throw them into the mortgage, so that's what we would do at that point.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Okay, Mr. Weddington, in regards to these two priorities here, the financial advisor, can we do this in-house? Do you have the talent to do this, Mr. Weddington?
Mayor, I appreciate that. I can certainly offer many different advertising schedules, and pros and cons of different clinics that are available. I simply lack the time, and I don't have the exposure to the bond market to tell you, if you're getting a good deal, if you want to restructure debt, and you want to take it to the open market or private negotiation, private placement, I can't tell you for certain that the rate that you're paying is the best you can do at that time. I don't have that kind of experience or knowledge, and I would be remiss in my professional licensing to tell you that I do have this kind of acumen, but I do not, so.
Okay, the second priority, the water sewer rate study, is that something the water WAC can handle, or is that of their league?
Be a part of the league, plus, I think, I understand we're required to have a third party review to make recommendations, so this meets that. Some of the discussions we're having, having with the financial advisors, is can they kind of do that work? It's hard for me to be a rates studying, and at the same time, be the financial advisor. Sometimes within the firm, they can set up what they call Chinese wall, essentially, they can do both parts of the work, but it's something the WAC can do, we actually have to go out and get some.
Okay, I'm asking, because they have 95,000 tied up in this.
It is, it's, it's, to be honest with you, it's something we've done a while back, and we're just getting to a point now where, you know, this is more than a shot across the bow, we really need to look at where we are financially, we don't want to be two, three years down the road. And I want to be able to lay the groundwork, and the town wants to be able to lay the groundwork this year, so when we go, and have those discussions for FY18, that we can say, we're on restructuring, do this and what have you. I think Robert can do a lot with the financial advisors, but I think if we're looking at a full options, especially going to the private market, you need to have the financial advisor up there.
Okay, but the reason why I'm asking questions right now, is when we went into shock prior to 2008, it was citizen volunteers who formed the white committee and made recommendations, and to help get us out of the situation, whether you agree with those recommendations or not, and try to make, the talent came in within the community.
There's a difference between going to the operational and maintenance, which is very rarely looked at, and I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. It's just different when we're dipping into the financial markets and what our options are regarding that. There's some folks within the community that are good at that, but, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah.
It seemed to me there might be room for both.
Take the both.
That's it, the city, take a look in the professionals, take a look at this, because there may be things that we're missing.
Okay.
Robert, based on these types of studies, do you have any experience, like when you were surprised, and the city blew up with how many millions, thousands of people it had?
Yes, I do have some experience reviewing rate studies, as well as performing rate studies or rate calculations on my own. I did do, like, I reworked a study that was done by engineer, RT Engineering, for wastewater rates, but water rates I have only done, and some reworked for me, I've supported by providing information that reviewed the results, affirm the firms that were engaged to create the rates. There's a lot of assumptions and policy decisions that go into creating water rates, that, and even in some cases wastewater, that, again, it would be good to have a firm that has knowledge and experience, the kind of depth and breadth of kind of ideas, that we may want to entertain to adopt as part of our rate setting policies and objectives. So, again, I think in this case, I would not have the depth of experience or knowledge to be able to share with the town, considering all of its options and performance rates.
Thank you.
Would you like to continue?
That concludes our presentation at this moment, and with regard to the slides. Thank you.
Mayor, so one thing we also have to think about, and I think, considering the chance to go, when you look at our margin, how we get a lot of ownership, and how we're moving it that way, how do that get incorporated into the rates? Because where's our future growth coming from? Is it going to be Cave Creek, is it going to be Desert Hill, and how are we going to move those assets along? And if we do move those resources, that's, we'll make sure these are fair payment for that. There is some question whether, how black Desert Hills is and how much red is in Cave Creek. In my mind, it doesn't matter, I still have to pay those fees, and so if they're paid, it's harder allocated, really doesn't make a difference, but in housing issues, it'd be nice to have those closer knives about the area, but in the end, you still spend the same amount, and provide the wise jobs.
Okay. Okay, let's take a look at solutions. I'm going to make a statement about taking this off, because it's an over simplification. We need to find a million five. That's an oversimplification.
A little bit, only because we still have Kerry forwards from this year, so that's going to offset. It is preliminary right now. We are, we are going to, we look at our revenues. When we put this together, and I had the meeting with man in building, and Robert and the folks, we're fairly conservative with construction, I'm not sure where we are with the team in America, how this brings head and rock in all those places, even though I think head and rock, and those, in the team in America is going to be more active this year. So, it needs to take a look at like that. We're not in a crisis where we have to be black, but 1.5 is a long way out, and I'd like to bring this closer, tighter on that, because our cash flow carries, but it won't care. it won't carry us three years down the road. You can't stay on this model, three years from now we'll be broke, so we need to start making those adjustments now. I do see this as a foundation year, as a building year. This is a sports analogy, we need to lay the groundwork for Robert and for, to be honest, utilities. This is the first steps in doing that. Ninety-five thousand in my mind is a lot of money too, but if that's what we have to spend to do that.
Mayor Francis, if you start on solutions, we haven't had a chance to even ask questions on the slide.
How do you know it? Have I ever not given the citizens of this community justice?
But the slides disappeared, we can't even reverse.
You know, I really think we have the technology to bring them back. I want to hear from my council first, I want to hear from the staff, and then I'm all
Are there any places that we can cut?
Yeah, I mean, for example, yeah, there's a variety of places we still need to cut. I think, for example, we've been very progressive the last couple of years on roads. We've been catching up because things were coming neglected for a number of years. However, if I could, if I had my choice this year, I would stay within my money from HIRF, I would stay within that realm, maybe a little bit on the side, but I want to be funding. I think we have almost two hundred thousand in the FRO roads, involving beyond in the , out of the general fund, I probably might do that. It's very popular, you can still remove maintenance, but I would really just focus on using our HIRF funds around town and in the city down, that would be one. I need a better understanding than a broad statement that we need half a million token space. I think we're gonna have a presentation in short time from Mr. Vett, he'll give the council a better idea of where they are. I think that after that time, we'll have a better sense what we need to fund the debt. With that known, we still have, I know the exact number, three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand coming in for the course and sales tax, and there is money in that fund, so, no. I like to see, we have ten percent contingency, it's pretty high. I mean, this was an exceptional year, but generally, you don't spend that much, somewhere between one twenty-five and one hundred and fifty thousand, so you always need to have five hundred and forty thousand, maybe we can scale that back, set up ten percent, go down to seven and a half percent, something like that. So I think those type of things. We moved most of the personnel, I think, there's still a couple of the small things that may do with that, so, but we are still going through a meeting with my department heads and what we really need to do. Rodeo is big money and it's been erected for a long time. I think Mike Backsy does a fantastic job, Bob, you and those guys have been out there doing great work. However, I'm not sure in my mind I want to spend two hundred and forty thousand. I say mine, I mean us, because it's a scramble. For features, do I think there's something we can do with features? Yes. I know electrical definitely needs to be done, that's somewhere in the neighborhood, forty or fifty thousand, I think that's critical, but we've been very progressive for the last two years. I will be honest with you, I am disappointed that we didn't get some more revenues, other revenue this year, we gotta make sure that happens this year, because that money basically goes right back into facility. So, you know, and that's okay, but, so is there room there? Would I cut that in half or two-thirds, probably? At the same time, I still want to make some progress up there, because I don't want to stop progress for American. Like I said, I don't think we need down to be black, but we definitely might be in a bad position. However, you've been floating like this for a number of years, a million, you know, red or so, so.
I haven't looked at a T R in a long time, how about employees, who are leaving the year? You have a full.
F T Es is, it's just under thirty-eight right now. I mean, if you, I consider full-time employees as forty. We have a number of folks that, I can't think of two off the top of my head, thirty-two. I have one at twenty-five, the rest are at forty. We have one, there's one or two contract employees, usually as lead basis engineers, for example, I do have one, other economic development for, it's twelve thousand dollars a year, I think that probably means a little bit. But, I mean, so I think there's something like that, but I don't see any of that future staff. The problem is, we're starting to experience growth, we're seeing the headshots, we're seeing a variety of different things. So planning, building, and finance and utilities, they're being taxed out. Matter of fact, we're kind of falling behind on some things and we're outsourcing. One of the things we did do this year is, I'm not, we're a small operation and there's some little small routine things we're contracting out and into that service, for example, landscaping at the sewer plant, I'd rather have everyone go out there for Monday, new rack and spray, than pay someone eight thousand dollars a year to do that. So those types, and I'll be honest with you, I'm just confused about that. So I think, so as we have fresh eyes taking a look at some of these operations and we're making those changes to optimize and make things work better, in the long lines, those small things really only delay, it's the live riding, the rate studies, the restructuring, that's what's going to really put the town back in the block in a better financial position. But we are, I, I need to meet the hundreds every Wednesday. We're talking about budgets now, I'm going to meet with people individually again, covering up the street state, and what can we should cut, or drive for shooting, I think there is some money there that might be, you know, we've always got forty to fifty thousand every year, this year up to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand out there. The Calabi Trails, I think there's a lot of needs to be done on Trail.
As you know from your management, you need tan, tan is a lot of money.
Yes.
It's pretty, I don't know.
Can you explain the act of, the act of?
If you need tan, it's dust.
That's the problem.
It takes a match, it's not a duty. And we have stations all over the state.
Well, this year we took some good steps. One of our biggest complaints we ever had was always at the rodeo runs, because there's a lot of parking there. Yeah, and it was bad this year, but it's been worse enough, because we've got all that open dirt parking, which we've all covered with our millions this year, very cheaply, in-house. Staff did a good job under that. So we're more compliant and got into community town. Are they still having awkward issues, are we still going to have that? Yes, but no more than, um, normal. So I don't see that as being a significant impact, we've been taking that. And I know every year, we do go over, Todd and his crew have been either chip and seal, not usually, but usually chip, seal, or putting some millions down in some dirt roads to help us with those requirements, but not once now.
What about the area, that you knew?
What happened?
No, it's just.
Okay, so if this year is an opportunity to make some hard choices in order to make things not so pleasant for years from now, then, and I just use a million five as a target, because it's easier to have a target.
No, you're right.
We're not going to get another Walmart, that sort of operation, that could use a million and five a year.
Yes, it stays the town.
So it's got to be room bit by room that I don't think you can do. In this type of situation, when you have, in order to create revenue, you do it through business or you do it through taxation, which is a common topic.
Places like Burger can help us and Autozone.
Yeah.
They do help.
Yeah, they all help, I'm not saying, that's not what I'm saying. They all help, but if we're trying to get the house in order this year, or what's left of this year, in order to not put the community in a panic state for years from now, then this is the year that we may have to do some hard things. For example, manor pay, and as much as I think every employee or two of the towns are telling, if you're getting a budget ready, I mean, that's why you're having councilmen just to get a budget ready, maybe that's something you don't do for the next fiscal cycle. The forty grand that council appropriates to charities, that may be something for the next fiscal cycle. You do not do, why? Well, because we're taking hard, hard steps here. Excuse me, we've talked about this before, we have a number of neighborhoods that are dry-liner for the sewer. I think now is the time from council, bring it to council, to give those neighborhoods a year notice, you've got to be fair, because it's expensive to them, but in twelve months' time, they need to be protected the sewer, or in nine months' time, they need to be hooked up the sewer. Why? Well, because if they're hooked up, they're creating a neighborhood for them.
Also hooks up the legal government.
Yeah. Counsel?
Only a question on, uh, are they ready to go with their water?
Two weeks ago, I saw the memo. Yeah, they got approved by the county, they had people through the county process, I know they're doing that. The last, I do, I understand, I don't know where they exactly are with the bonds, but they were near that point, they're going out there and on the road, I think they were near that point. So every time I've had a discussion with Mr. Steph, it's been positive, moving in the right direction. I'm hoping to have everything, at least in my mind, construction with Steph's accomplished, because he's got kind of a timetable, he said. So I don't think we'll be completely, we have a license, I think that would be predicted in the coming year, but once he's out breaking ground, I think that's positive sign.
Will this study, Robert, include service line connections? For example, if the water department, for new service?
Yes, at some point, there would have to be a calculation and assumption made on growth in order to come up with the correct rates.
Folks out West would have clues to what cost to hook up.
Okay. Yes.
Counsel? Mr. Wett?
I just, I think we kind of did this last year, we had these meetings, I think it's healthy to do that. I just want to make sure everyone understands kind of the footing of the law right now. It's not as bad as it seems, but at the same time, we want to take some steps, we usually want to take those steps. Just a full point of reference, FY sixteen, we're looking at chip sales for roads, and that bill's approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Every dollar I save now, I don't have to budget for next year, because of the difficulty that carried forward. I am having some discussions with all the courts and the town engineer, should we be doing this now, is this actually absolutely needed right now? Or can I save some of those funds for next year? And I've seen, see the whole hundred and twenty-six, but can I save fifty grand out of that? And it leaves pressure for next year.
There are the things you need to look at, because every little thing you can do, like you're describing, or this project in downtown, it's the building hidden.
Hidden rock.
Hidden rock. Yeah, it's going to contribute, it's going to help, so that's a positive, but these other things, anything we can do within the next fiscal cycle is going to help, because you're not in panic mode here.
No.
If this returned to paradise, I would say, well, gee, Saturday racing is coming up, we'll balance back a little bit, right? This isn't a gambling operation at the time, so it's got to be done a little bit differently.
We have started similar story to a project that's different funding. We are doing some of our own stuff, but I am looking at what we're doing now, is it worth doing? So in my mind, things that are really necessary to do, or I think will provide benefit to us operationally, two, three years down the road, trying to go forward, other things that kind of be more reserved on. There's not a whole lot, because we're, you know, April, looking at May, June, so, but some of those things that I can push off. I just don't want to start taking too many steps backwards in some of the progress we made, you know? We've done good, I mean, even Vice Mayor Lamar, when he was here, had the signs, and I'm glad we did that, that was a good push, and took care of that, almost five hundred signs. So that was a good push, things that needed to be done, but there's some things that I think we can push off for another year, we wanted to do it. I think next year, if the restructuring goes as we have had, that we showed some, we've had discussions with folks, that will really help us in the short line and the long line.
You're doing exactly what should be done. You're on the finance record, that's our alert, this is the situation, this is the reality, Governor. It's going to council for us to figure out the problems. And it's good that you're bringing it, don't bring it to us after we approve a budget, and we're, oh, by the way, we're actually down a million and a half or a hundred, I know it's better than not.
I have a question for you. Could you give us a really good tip on the Kentucky Derby?
Anything else from counsel? Okay. Anna?
Thank you. Robert, one of the slides you talked about maintaining reserves, I was in this chamber year after year when the town paid a lot of money to hire Mark Reader, who would be a financial advisor, a very, a very intelligent, very sharp man. On our minimum reserve, Mr. Reader always told counsel, the balance must be, a minimum general fund balance must be twenty-five percent of its expenditures. Can you tell us where we are in that part?
That is not a number that I've calculated recently, so I can't tell you where we stand in relationship to that particular piece of advice.
Let's see. We're in debt, it seems like your answer is to hire more people. Let's talk about maybe decreasing the people that we have. There are two towns the same size of ours that pay their town manager eighty-eight thousand and a hundred and twenty-one thousand. We're paying our manager a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
No, that's not true, not even close to being true. That's not true.
It's on budget.
Yeah, because that's, I don't get paid a hundred and seventy-five, I don't misrepresent that.
Let me finish.
Got it.
We've paid for police protection, six hundred and nineteen thousand a year, four hundred and fifty thousand to the sheriff department. We have a town marshal, why do we need to pay the sheriff's department also? That's just a question, I'm asking you to look at it towards your, you know, solutions. On the bed tax rental, you're concerned about what the legislature is going to do about house rentals. There are eighteen house rentals on our MLS now in the town of Cape Creek, and not one of them are even listed under the tax record as residential renters, so I know you're not collecting a dime on them. No one has really enforced that in the town of Cape Creek, so I don't think you're going to lose a lot of money there. We should be, but we're not. If, according to your report, Robert, we're down on permits, building, et cetera, then maybe we need to cut down on some staff in town. You really haven't talked about how to reduce your expenses, you've only talked about how to increase it. I appreciate your time, and those are my questions.
I'm just going to take a break on a couple of, you know, comments. First, we're not hiring staff to as consultants, they come in from one single party, it's kind of like tissue advice, make human, maybe, so we're not hiring staff, there's no benefit for you to make that. And some of it is required to do on their own, just for the rate side, we need to bring some in, that's my understanding. House rentals is through D O R, we get notification of house rentals, I send or we send others off to D O R, send, investigate that, but we can't ask sales to offer. We did explore looking at, did one renting houses have a business tax, business license? We're not affiliated to that in Arizona. So, so we do inform the permission to D O R, stay responsible, that's how it, we don't control income or, for, she went through, it's presumably true.
Anna, this is not a debate, but if it were, I would be happy to rebut everything you said, and at the proper time, I will.
Other citizens? Yes, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we anticipate any revenues from FEMA this year? I don't, I don't, we have money under grants generally, but not from FEMA specifically.
The two thousand and sixteen budget item for FEMA, we don't believe we will realize any revenue from it, we've not continued that in the two thousand and seventeen budget.
Since we don't realize it, it's not expensed, it's a wash item. Thank you.
Citizens, any other questions?
I have one comment and one question. One comment is that considering, that considering the refinancing, it's like a mortgage on your house. You only do it when the interest rate is going to be substantially different. And we're in a situation now, we're almost ten years into some of the bonds, and we are paying substantially more on the principal than we are in the interest. If there's renegotiation of our bonded debt at the present time, what it'll do is it'll extend it out another ten years beyond what we have now, and I look at that a little bit as a mortgaging our children, not my children, because they're too old to worry about them. But that, I think that's a concern, and unless it is, somebody needs to do a really competent cost-benefit analysis to determine whether we're going to get what we want out of it, other than just reducing the amount of money we have to pay each year.
Forty thousand dollars.
That's the reason we hired the financial analysis.
Okay, so we're getting a good forty thousand dollar cost-benefit analysis. That's good. Okay, the question, I notice it appears to me that the, um, expenses are substantially beyond what the revenues are. If that's the case, does that mean that we will be tapping the so-called nonexistent reserves? Because I noticed that the carryout this year, or proposed carryout, is substantially less than the carryout previous years.
Thank you for that, Mayor. I'd like your response. Uh, the first piece that you talked about was the, the debt. And I just wanted to reemphasize what Peter had indicated earlier, that the debt that was taken was a short-term debt relative to the asset line. So, basically, we would be matching your children's usage of that asset and their, and have them pay for their use rather than have you pay for them, but as parents, we're probably used to that anyways. Uh, the second thing is, uh, on the comment of the, uh, negative amount potentially that could be in terms of our expenses exceeding our revenues, I mean, that, that is, that is a good question. And until we actually go through the fiscal year, uh, there is a potential that it could end up where we have exhausted any dollars over and above our reserve requirement. It could be, but it all depends on, because we don't have control over every revenue. Uh, as I indicated earlier, the state legislature has an impact on us. But we do have control over expenses, and, and part of this, um, goes back, you know, several years since I've, I've actually been here, several years now. And that is, we've always been responsible with ensuring that, you know, we're looking at revenues before we're engaging and making, connecting ourselves in a way that would incur major expenses. So, we try to marry the expenses as, as we realize revenues. So, in that sense, we're always good stewards in terms of trying to ensure that we simply don't spend more money than we make. That being said, yeah, it may be that this next year, as Peter had indicated, we have to build kind of a platform in order to ensure the financial stability of the town going forward, um, and, and that might happen. So, but to the extent of which it may or may not tap into those required reserves, we don't know yet until the, until we have the budget finalized, until, until we fully execute that budget by the lapse of time, so.
Thank you. Was there a, I don't think I'll need a microphone.
Are you sure?
Yeah. All recorded. Um, I'm just wondering, is this out?
Anybody?
Which one? I'm used to microphones. Can you hear me? Okay, I was just curious. Um, I asked this last year. I said...
Smack it.
Hey, that's good. Uh, last year, I asked Peter, does, I mean, is the merit raise just simply a de facto benefit? Or, um, I, and, and the second part would be, last year, there was, you know, some pathetic narratives with these requests for funds. Did, did you meet the staff or did they just tell you what they wanted?
I meet the staff. We have a discussion about what their needs are from the, um, process. But this budget actually extended out two point three to two point four million in the red. We've been cutting since that's where we're down to about one point five at this time. And we, we're gonna continue doing that. Uh, I don't think this version has the narratives. I think it's just the Trump, just what it remembers for tonight's meeting. Second is, we do go through a personal evaluation process, so we did issue the merits, we would ask, uh, department heads, we do their staff, we make their recommendations, and as a group, the department heads can sit and talk about it, and then we make that decision. Again, um, I think we have a budget of forty thousand, we're thirty-one at that time. Uh, this year, from this conversation I'm having here today, it's probably unlikely we'll go through that process. So, uh, I do believe in core. I think we need to maintain where everybody is, without changing that. Mayor's gonna be taking, you're gonna take a look at that, Mayor.
What else we should speak? Okay, I know councilwoman Clarence, you have the councilman McGuire on the budget committee. Still, I need other directions from council. Some of the things we mentioned. Uh, other things between now and when we need to through a technical, I come up with some other ideas. I, I, I know we've been thrilled with outside vendors, but our merchants, I guess we do require that they have a business license.
Right.
Sure. Yeah. So, if that's the only way to control this, because we're not getting any sales tax. Go with legal counsel and find a way that to come into town to be business, we brought to two hundred and fifty dollars every time. If they don't wanna pay that, we don't do it. Then our, our merchants or our brand will prosper. And the only reason, not, not that I'm down on outside, I just don't think, I'll just say, everything, we gotta tell them is that everything, absolutely everything, and see what we can do, because we pull this off, then three years from now...
They just need a tenant cable and fifty dollars in their business.
Yes, I know, and that's, that's very easy. That's, that's very easy. I've never liked it because it takes away from our business people, who are here tomorrow outside of evening. And so, if there's some reason why we have to live with it, then let's raise the business license to two hundred, for example, two hundred and fifty dollars, we're more up there. So, then we can take advantage of this community, of vendors that do business with Third Paradise. And again, this is not Third Paradise. This is a community. But they pay a vendor's fee to do business with Third Paradise. Why? Because they make tons of money over a whole dozen, for example, or the beer company, they're doing business with us.
One of the other things we're looking at, I'm actually bringing, uh, coordinates to the town council in April and May. It sort of deals with water meters. You know, we have a number, because we took over all water systems. We have a number of locations that have water meters, first, that are not associated with accounts, and then that are some that are associated with accounts, but they don't pay the minimums. In every water district I've ever seen or been part of as a municipality or city, uh, if you have a meter in the ground, meters technically owned by the city, the town, um, you pay the minimum, not a usage, because it's, you know? And I think that would be beneficial, because there's a number of folks that have three, four, five meters. One guy has five meters on his property, pays no fees, and I would say that's right, because we're basically subsidizing those folks.
He can take them out, though.
He can take, that's true.
He's not using the water.
That's his truth.
Yeah, he's not using the water.
He did, right. We have two types, I think. We have usage, and then we have folks who just have meters in the ground.
Well, things that I wanna see come to council, you have Camden Ridge over here, which is getting ready to, uh, embark into phase three, the, the end process of the development, Richmond Homes. And there, of course, will be dry line and everything, so bring something to council, present it to council. We'll figure out a timeline, but in nine months, the Estable de Choyas of the world, the Camden Ridges, are gonna be required to come to the sewer to try to get the sewer expense down, which has gone to more trouble than any other single factor.
One point, I just wanted to make that a common residence. That's not true. Residents that are connected with water flow. No, no, these are undeveloped lots. There's no residents.
Come after citizens.
I'm listening. Let him speak.
Undeveloped lot. Is, some of them are, most of them, almost all of them are vacant and undeveloped. That's, that's not true. Residents are folks who actually buy, live here, have a home here, participate in the community. These are not, some of them are investment lots.
Our water bill is fifty dollars already without water, okay? We can't raise our, I will take it well, rather than stay on the, hey, pick up.
Oh, that's the, you're not understanding why I just said it.
You can't keep raising our fees, Peter. You gotta look in-house as to how you can reduce the money going out of town hall.
With all due respect, I didn't say raise it. No, no, I, I do think a lit study is required. And you do have to pay for the services they're using.
Yeah, yeah.
We all, I mean, too. I'm one of the ones, I'm too, and to be honest with you, last year, we actually did Desert Hills. We increased them by all boosters areas by eight dollars, because they were getting subsidized, which meant we got. So, we want fairness, right? But we still have to pay to maintain your car, get the gas, and just, and repairs and maintenance. Same thing with the water district, both of them. I, I do believe folks who just have, we're using the ground, if you can take them off, but they should be paying minimum. That's a common, given place like that, from what I understand. It's very common in Arizona, for whatever reason, we haven't done that. And part of it is, is when we purchase those, when the town purchased those water systems three years ago. And there's some on, is we don't even know that are up there. They pop up every now and then. And the reason we're finding out is because sometimes people are using water and not telling us. And we catch them.
It's a good thing we bought Desert Hills.
When, when does your budget committee?
I believe when time gets back. I didn't realize he was leaving. I did wanna have another discussion with him before we met with the council again, even though I do think I would rather have, uh, another meeting with the council. I don't know if it'll be in the April or, or, or May, because June's pre-worked, and I would rather have...
Okay, what does it mean? We, we have council next Monday, am I right there?
That's right.
And then, and then the next, the next Monday, are we still on April or are we all going to the other day?
Two weeks from now, we'll probably be actually, could you give us some time?
Eighteenth is the rule, and twenty-fifth would be the next Monday.
Okay, and the, and the first Monday then in May is the, the council?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Two, at least two areas that we have considered as well was the parks and the rodeo. That, between those two, you're at four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in the budget. And we did discuss also the forty thousand that was set aside to the library or someone's...
For the bus.
And, and, and if you didn't want to cut it out completely, then reduce it substantially. And at the end of the day, as we started to go through those mine, by the second day, was, you know what? Whatever it takes to get your revenues to equal your costs, you can't, whatever it's gonna take. So, if that means we have to put a freeze on hiring, or all of the difficult things that will have to come with it, that's what you have to do, and analyze every person's value in the town, and what they're producing. And if they're not, then, you know, then you have to start making those tough decisions. And I, I'm not sure that fifty dollars, and we had that discussion. I don't have any that are out there that would bring in any substantial amount of money, but if you wanna pursue the idea of saying, um, you have, you're not using that, you wanna get it back to us or you wanna pay fifty dollars. That's basically what you're saying to them, is you're not putting any water through, but you're gonna charge them fifty dollars a month just to have that meter sitting there, because you might be able to use it someplace else.
Let's meet in two weeks, same tour, same budget with, with before council. And then the following week, you'll be with Susan and Tom, and you'll actually be laying down the budget, but...
Maybe before, maybe before.
All I'm saying, within fourteen days, uh, come up with, uh, uh, I'll, come up with some more ideas. Find out from legal what we can, cannot do. What would be the timeline for the Estable de Choyas and Camden Ridges of the world? So, we've got, just like what's the appropriate timeline? I'm gonna go a little bit more country.
And I do think at the same time that those who are sitting here tonight, go online, take a look at this. Put your recommendations online, so that we can have them before we sit down, because we wanna hear from what you have to say as well. This is your town. This is your budget. This is the difficulty we're facing, and what anybody has to say is important. Wherever you are, I'm your representative. I wanna know what you think. I wanna know what you feel. So, take a look at this, and make sure you go through it and analyze it. In fact, um, just to let you know, the visuals that are in here were from Tom. Tom kind of likes to see the fires and so on and so forth, so, um, and look at, and look at who, how many people were hired or how many people have been in these jobs in different departments, and see if there's been any increase. Go through and take a look, and then come up with some ideas.
Just remember, we're gonna do zero to zero, because we're pretty full to the happy people.
I understand that, but that'd be...
I know you do. I, I will. I just want to work on some.
That's, thank you, council.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, just wanna kind of go over a couple of things. You know, we're, we're talking about not having as much revenue. And there's a couple of things that the state legislature, and let's get a little bit clarification. This is done with the community, this community in the last four years or so. The first was the development fees that we have. They've changed those. Um, they were, they were pretty substantial before, and I always looked at those as like an initiation fee into a property club. You live to get pretty, you've got larger lots, you've got more open space, you've got, you've got amenities that you don't have when you're living in a house in Phoenix or Scottsdale or wherever else. And the homeowners got together and, and, and had the legislature, they were gonna change that, where we, where we're not getting those numbers. Those things were, they, things were able to be used for, for, for open space, for, for, for trails, for utilities, for things that we actually needed the money and we utilized it. The next thing they did, a week from today, all of us are supposed to have our, our, our taxes in. And what lies in your state taxes now is how much stuff did you buy from out of state? How state mailer, and they expect you to pay sales tax on that. And what the state did to us as a small community when they did the construction sales tax, is they took that and they, and basically, you're, you would be paying, if, if, if the state wanted us to do the same thing for them that they've done to the community of Capri and other small communities, we would actually be paying sales tax to Massachusetts, to the, to wherever we were buying the stuff from, as opposed to what we're doing now, where they, they've taken that and, and Phoenix, and Phoenix was behind this. I'm sure Tucson, Gilbert, the, the big cities that weren't behind that, where you're able to buy the, the, the items. They're using the construction, so they're getting, they're getting those, those numbers elsewhere. Uh, so basically, the big cities screwed the small country, country, uh, small towns, and that's where we're sitting. So, that's why we're looking at something like one point two million dollars less than we had a couple of years ago in, in revenue. And it's, keep that in mind when you, when you, when you're voting for your legislators, your representatives, and your state senators, because, and the governor, because, by far, they don't care. They care about the, the large units and the, and the whole those, and that's all I gotta say about that.
Okay, that's, that's...
Help me out.
Exactly. Exactly.